Good evening and welcome to the Hawaii Kai Neighborhood Board Meeting. My name is Roberta Mayer. I'm Chair of the Board and I represent Sub District 10. I'm going to be asking the Board members to introduce themselves, starting this time on my far left. Jean?
Thank you. Jean Tierney, Sub District 8.
Kajalau, Sub District 11, Portlock Road and Honolulu Triangle Kokokai.
Joel Brilliant, at large.
Ilse Silvercott, Sub District 1.
Samuel Wolf, Sub District 4.
This is Jeff, who is going to introduce himself.
I'm Jeffrey Jones and I'm the Neighborhood Assistant.
Hi, I'm Holly Lyons, Sub District 2.
Greg Knudsen, at large.
Alajalee, Sub District 5.
Dixon Park, at large.
Herb Schreiner, Sub District 6.
And we have some online Board members. Would you please introduce yourselves?
Elizabeth Riley, at large and en route. We'll be there in about 10 minutes. Mahalo.
All right, Elizabeth. Elizabeth Riley.
Stacy Martin, at large.
Go ahead, Kim. Kim, you're muted.
Can you hear me now?
Go ahead.
John Hollinsworth, Sub District 7.
All right. Thank you, Board members, for introducing yourselves. And we're going to be moving on right away to our status reports. Is the Honolulu Fire Department present? Department online? All right, Fire Department is not here. If they do show in a few minutes, we'll certainly recognize them. Honolulu Police Department? Think they're online?
Yes, good evening. I'm District 7. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Okay, so first of all, with the stats for last month, motor vehicle thefts, we had six. Burglaries, we had four. Thefts, 12. Unauthorized entry into motor vehicles, 28. Total cost for service, $6,238. The tip we're going to use is, been a lot of scams going around. So the tip for this month for us is going to be car accident scams. Basically, be aware of the scam when driving in a shopping center parking lot. You may be approached by a stranger who accuses you of hitting their vehicle. They will then show you damages on their car. They will tell you that your vehicle caused damages, even if the damages appear to be old or from another incident. After showing the damage, the stranger may demand that you pay them in cash for the repair of their vehicle. So basically, do not pay the stranger. If you pay the stranger, they will often demand more money once they know that you're willing to pay the initial amount. If you refuse to pay it, the stranger may threaten to call the police and tell you that your auto insurance rates will go up if a police report is made. The stranger is trying to discourage you from calling the police. If you are involved in an accident or unsure if you caused an accident, please call 911. Tell the officer what happened and let the officer do the accident investigation. That's it for the tips.
Thank you very much. Are there questions for the Honolulu Police Department? No questions? I do have... Oh, Kim, you have your hand raised? Go ahead. You're muted, Kim.
Sorry about that. I wanted to verify if you all were still in the shopping center.
Oh, the Hawaii Kai Shopping Center?
Yes.
Yes, you're talking about the office there?
The substation, yes.
Yes, but we are there. The station is there. Technically, it's not, I guess, an official substation. The officers are there to use it. It's not manned 24 hours. But I think, I don't know if there was some... Just from what I heard, there may be some talk of us not being there. I can't confirm that for sure at this time, but...
My understanding...
To answer your question is yes.
Okay, so my understanding is that you are no longer... They're not renewing your lease? Or they're not renewing the lease for the substation to actually be there?
I don't know the specifics of that exactly, sorry. But I know there was... It was brought up.
Okay, I'll bring it up later in the meeting with Mr. Waters. But thank you. We're going to try to keep you there.
Yes, we like to be there.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lieutenant Mira, I do have something that came in from a community member. She sent a letter.
Yes, go ahead.
Her concern is that during the mid-March electrical outage, traffic headed townbound on Kalana'ana'ole Highway was backed up quite a distance. And there were no police officers manning the major intersections. And she was wondering why this was not... Why the police did not make themselves available to manage some of the very busy intersections along Kalana'ana'ole.
Yes, so that issue, it was brought up by our command in our last meeting. So it was addressed. I wasn't working at the time. I can't speak for anything that happened that night. I don't know if officers were tied up with other things. As best as possible, in those type of situations, the officers will go out, they'll assess. I mean, if it's a big blackout, it's kind of hard to... We have only so many officers. We can't man every intersection. We'll try to hit the main ones and let the traffic flow as best as possible. I know that the recent one, that was kind of a long blackout, extended blackout. So, but it was brought up to us and we'll try... Make sure we'll try our best to man the intersections at the time.
Yes, Jean?
Yeah, I went through the intersection at Keahole and Kalana'ana'ole. And there was a police officer sitting in a car, not directing traffic. And that kind of confused me, given the lights are out and he or she was there. So I think this issue has come up a number of times and probably needs to be looked into a little further.
Okay, yes, noted by our command as well. So I'm not sure where it came from exactly, but it was brought up to us and reiterated to...
We have a couple more questions. Greg and then Herb.
I was wondering if it's accurate that during such an outage where the lights are completely out and no blinking yellow or anything, that drivers should be considering it as a four-way stop or all-way stop? Isn't that legally...
Correct. You're correct. Yes, you're correct, sir. All drivers should, any intersection where the lights are out or blinking, they should treat it as a four-way stop.
Thank you.
Herb?
Yeah, I was going to reiterate that also as far as a four-way stop. Yeah, a lot of people are abusing that. But if they do follow the law, then you won't get in an accident. You don't need an officer. But with that being said, they're also answering every single alarm that goes off during that time period. And with only three to four officers in our district, that's going to really hold off. We don't know why the guy was sitting on the side of the road watching, but he was probably in between calls. Or, you know, he puts his life on the line too by going out in the middle of an intersection in a total blackout. Those are my thoughts.
All right, any other comments or questions for the Honolulu Police Department?
Appreciate that, sir. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lieutenant Mira. That's all. No more questions. Thanks for joining us. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Board of Water Supply, Iris Oda. Hello, Iris.
Good evening. Got my papers, so I'm going to have to read off my tiny phone here. For April general announcement, we have Protect Oahu Water. So visit our boardofwatersupply.com/protectowahuwater to learn about the latest operational actions in response to the Red Hill crisis. So this includes weekly pumpage charts, recent drinking and monitoring well test results, BWS news and updates on Red Hill, water conservation tips and rebates, and Oahu's water history. So that's my one announcement. And a status update for the project in Kalamaha Valley area. We are still just, the contractors are still waiting for the materials to get online. And...
Do you have a new start date?
They didn't give me that. I just was informed to...
Material. Okay. All right, Ilse?
Hi, thank you for being here and providing us updates. I have a question about repairs which take place on Kawahaii, where it enters Hawaii Kai. Is there an update how that project is going and the estimated completion date? Because it does block a line, block a traffic line, and there's also a lot of noise.
It's Hawaiai? So I'm going to have to get that next month on that.
All right, Elizabeth, you have your hand up? Elizabeth, you're muted.
Apologies, I was just wondering if you happen to know where they're going to be staging the materials for the work that's going to be done in Kalamaha Valley?
I'll ask that question also.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the Board of Water Supply? No questions, Iris. Thank you very much. Kaiser Complex Schools, Mr. Gu, welcome.
Aloha, Board and community. I'd like to bring some updates for the Kaiser Complex of schools. There's a lot going on, lots of sports. I won't go into any individual stuff, but the spring sports are finalizing in playoffs in states. And we have many teams doing remarkably well. We had a great Earth Day Festival, and that was held at Kaiser High School last week Friday. And so thank you for participating in that. We had 30 booths. Amazing. We do want to reiterate one warning, and that was the feral chicken issue requesting cocoa from the community. Please do not feed nor release chickens onto the Kaiser High School campus. We appreciate that. Kokohed Elementary School, they're going to be celebrating their school's 70th anniversary next school year. So they're asking for any alum or community members who would like to assist in that event, tend to contact the Kokohed School Office. Kaiser High School placed second in the state of Hawaii for their science Olympiad team. So congratulations to them. Over the spring break, Kaiser High School administrators and teachers attended an international baccalaureate global conference in Daegu, Korea. And they are committed to providing the highest quality education for all of our homana in Hawaii Kai and all the way to Aina Haina. And they just continue to train at the highest level. New Valley State Science Fair, there are many finalists. Congratulations to them. Also, New Valley Middle School was awarded a six-year WASC accreditation from 2024 to 2030. And that is the highest level of accreditation that they earned. On top of that, our schools not only are WASC accredited, but they're also IB accredited. They call it evaluation and authorization. So Kaiser High School and New Valley Middle School earned another five-year authorization as an IB World School for the middle years program, which runs from sixth grade all the way to 10th grade. So it spans two different schools. And then Kaiser High School was also authorized for their rigorous diploma program and the career program. The diploma program, just to let you know, is the most rigorous in the nation. And when kids apply to colleges who have earned that diploma program diploma, the admissions office at colleges put them at the top of the stack, above any other AP students or running start students of community college credit. So they are given the first priority for college admissions. And that's how rigorous it is. Only 10 complexes in the United States have an IB World School authorization from K to 12. So we're one of the very few complexes.
And can you tell everybody again what IB stands for? I know it's part of the jargon, but not everybody knows.
I kind of sped through it, but it's our international baccalaureate. And it was a program of high rigor created in 1968. And it was first created for children of diplomats who traveled around the world and so that they could get a high-quality education no matter where they went. And now it stands for cutting-edge education and the highest rigor possible. All right, finally, one little commercial Kaiser High School commencement is happening May 24 at 6:00 PM. So just be advised for traffic. I'd like to open it up for questions.
Questions for Mr. Gu on our schools? From the audience, please come on up. You need to use the microphone to state your question. Could you introduce yourself?
Oh, yes. Oma Lia Ko'ouyanoa, Omanaluamayo, Kaiser High School 89. My question is, I do not want to be a Debbie Downer, but I would like to know if the staff being accused of that horrific crime is still working on property. It's my friend's son with the Special Ed Department back in November 27. And I just want to make sure my family is safe up there and the rest of the community knows, because we should be transparent of what's happening. And I just want to see if that staff is still on property, able to work or at least off the property. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that question. And I will leave that up to the Kaiser administrators to be able to answer and share that. I am not privy to that information, but I do know Kaiser grad class of 1990. I do stand behind their work. And they know that they have to be confidential when handling things and know when they can share anything that's public knowledge. But I can assure you, they're doing everything possible to continue to make that school safe, including all of our other schools, safe for all students.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gu, for joining us tonight. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. But I will take it back and whatever I can share at the next board meeting, I will do so.
All right.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Okay, I also put on the agenda the Hawaii Department of Transportation, Highways Division. Is Galen Wong here? We have someone online from the Highways Division?
Yes.
Okay. Could you please introduce yourself?
I'm Brian Kimora from the Hawaii DOT Highways Division Traffic Branch. And I was...
Galen indicated that he might be here tonight, that he was going to be here in person and would address some of our traffic concerns. Do you think he'll be here a little later in the meeting?
I'm not sure. He did say he was going to be there, but I can do a little presentation on some of the concerns that was brought up at the last meeting, as I understand.
All right, that would be very helpful. Thank you.
Okay. Let me share my screen here. Can anybody see this?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. So as I understand, there was concern about the raised crosswalk at Portlock. And one of the questions was, how was this key table location determined? And how this came about for us was that we did receive a request at the Hawaii Kai Safe Streets Town Hall on August 1, 2023. Some of the background of that particular crosswalk kind of goes back sometime to August 2023. And we have had several requests of concerns there. As you can see, two times we have had a request for a signal. And two times we had had a request for a flashing beacon or what people call an RRFB. Results of those four times was the traffic signal flashing beacon was not warranted due to the low bottom of pedestrians crossing there. However, we did try to improve the crosswalk because people are still using it and using the bus stops mainly. And we didn't want to remove the crosswalk and possibly access to the bus service. So we did install over the years a fluorescent yellow-green colored pedestrian warning signs to help enhance the visibility of the crosswalk. We still had concerns. And then we back in and we did advanced stop bars, which pretty much moved the stop bars back. And then we added some more related signage of where to stop and advanced crosswalk payment wording, if you guys recall seeing that previously. This last request now made us go in again. And what we looked at was a crash and speed data again. And this is the result of that crash and speed data. In that vicinity of that crosswalk, there were 36 major crashes, three serious injuries, two pedestrian crashes occurring at the crosswalk, one bicycle in the area, and then three speed-related. We also looked at some speed data which was taken over covers of a month. And the average speed was 38 miles per hour, which is kind of good. It's 35 there. Eighty-fifth percentile speed was at 44, a little bit on the higher side, but generally like to say within five miles. But what really got us was the daily maximum speed. And that average speed on daily basis for one month was 60 miles per hour. We did receive, recorded one person, several people going in 70, in excess of 70 in this stretch. So that prompted us to justify putting these raised crosswalks, this raised crosswalk in. Okay, some other questions were... Oh!
And... Oh, go ahead. You're still referring to the raised crosswalk?
Yes, yes. So some of the things was about bicyclists and whether that was dangerous for them. We design our raised crosswalks to take into account the bicycles. And so they're safe for them to own. And they also have auto same warnings as the vehicles and drivers that this little pump is ahead. We also reached out to EMS early on, and they had no concerns. And to date, we have not received concerns from them. And the last one was the community input prior to notification. Before we start installation, we usually give at least a two weeks' notice for that construction. And then we also have a safety map that we usually let everybody know what it's aware of, that people can check out, so that they know that these things are being planned. At times, we do try to get our Neighborhood Board reps to be one other conduit for us. I'm not sure if that took place here in some of this particular case. And I think that's all I have right now for open for questions.
All right, Brian, first of all, the raised crosswalk came as a surprise to most of us here on the board. It was not presented to the board, and I'm not sure where the notice was distributed or how it was shared. And who is the Safe Streets Group? Oh, I'm sorry. Is that your Town Hall meeting, Representative Ward? Okay, and so was it your office that requested some kind of mitigation at the crosswalk? Or could you come on up, please?
We took input from the community, and there was three prioritizations. One was Kamilaiki School, because parents were so concerned about people speeding up and down Hawaii Kai Drive. Kalamaha Valley, where since its inception, never has had a crosswalk. Kids playing at the district park to get into their cars need a crosswalk to get across the highway. And then thirdly, where was the third one? Oh, at the junction of Kealaho and Hawaii Kai Drive. People don't stop. Probably Mr. Knudsen knows this even more than I. And they're running into the wall, and there's no crosswalk there. With some kind of a mitigation, maybe blinking. And we are in the process at our office, waiting for DOT to outline maybe two or three issues, or let's say solutions for each of those three issues. And then we're going to put it out to a vote to the community. But on this one, no, that, I think that was independently... I mean, people mentioned speeding on Kalani'ana'ole Highway, but it was not one of those from our Town Hall meeting. But... But maybe it was mentioned, but it never reached the top three that we have been working with Mr. Morton of DTSE in county.
Okay. Now, Brian, you're from the State Department of Transportation, right?
Correct.
So Representative Ward, I think if you were working with Roger Morton, that's city and county. And so we have two different transportation agencies.
And at the last meeting, I don't believe Brian or anyone from the state was there. I know Mr. Sniffin was invited, but he was not able to make it.
Okay. Now, Brian, in your report, you indicated that there were several requests concerning this particular area on Kalana'ana'ole. Did all of those requests come from the Safe Streets Group? Because Representative Ward is saying that that was not one of their high priorities.
No, over the years, it did come through various legislators' offices.
Can you put back that previous slide that had all of the times that this area was brought to your attention?
Okay. Here we go.
So it looks like previous requests were made in 2018. 2015, 2018. And then a request, August 1, 2020. And that is from the Safe Streets Town Hall. But according to Representative Ward, that was not a high priority. There were several other areas that were of greater importance.
Yeah, when we opened the microphone, people say, hey, this one or that one or otherwise. I was not aware that Mr. Sniffin was going to pick that up. But let me attest this, though. In the 90s, I would get parents saying, hey, I can't get my kids across the street from school because it's so fast. In those days, we didn't even have signs that said crosswalk. We got that, and then there was outstripping. And it's been a controversial area. And when I heard tonight, when he said 60 miles an hour, I mean, wow. And they are stopping. It's not an abrupt one. It's a modest one compared to other speed bumps, which kind of make you do a rabbit jump, basically. So I think it'll probably help the safety of the community, whether it's a... So I think it'll probably help the safety of the community, whether it's acceptable or not. It's something that suddenly was there.
All right, are there other questions for Brian? Yes, Paige?
So Rep, this Hawaii Kai Sea Streets Town Hall, that's your town hall. Okay, so you're saying?
Two of them, one in August and then we had one about six weeks ago. In fact, there's in my report that you just got were the three priorities that I just mentioned.
Yeah, but you're saying that you, the people that were at your meeting were city and county.
No, it, it, the August meeting was city and county and state.
Okay, but Hawaii, but Portlock Road and Cal Highway were not a huge priority.
I mean, if it came up in discussion, it didn't make the top three, which in the next three, I mean, what?
So, so, uh, Mr. Kimora, you've had three requests to have, uh, speed for a traffic signal, a flashing beacon. And then the third request that you received on August 1st, 2023 was for what?
It, it was for a speed hump.
It was for a speed hump, okay. And because you had one request for a speed hump, y'all decided that that's what you were going to do.
Well, what we do is we did the evaluation.
Okay, um, when you did your evaluation, did you take into account all the people that are making illegal left-hand turns into Portlock Road and illegal out of Portlock Road? Was that a consideration? And since the speed hump has gone in, have you guys done any research as to how many people are now doing illegal left-hand turns into and out of Portlock Road?
No, we have not. And that was being aware from the last meeting. That was another concern. And so.
And, and am I the only person in history, since this has been going on since March of 2015? That, um, has ever raised an issue about people making those illegal left-hand turns?
As far as I am aware. But let me share the screen on because of being aware of that. We, we are planning to try to see if we can tighten up the turning radiuses on this island, put some delineers up, try and move out the center line out and the stop bar out to try to make it more like it's not a full intersection.
Do you know that I've sat there, um, three times now since that speed hump has gone in? I've sat on Portlock Road three times now for at least an hour each time. And each time I've sat there, I've watched more than three people make illegal left-hand turns in and out of Portlock. And it's worse because they believe that the people that are coming in toward that hump are slowing down. And not everybody is slowing down to probably where they should be slowing down to. But it, the close calls are, they're worse. They're worse now than they were before. So now, instead of just taking out the speed hump and maybe trying to find another solution to this, you're now going to do construction, more road construction and you're going to, I'm sorry, do what with that median? You're going to put stancings on it or something? What did you just say?
So we're going to try to widen it a bit to make it a little more difficult for people to make lefts and in and out of the, that Portlock Road.
I have a.
Okay, Herb and then Elizabeth.
My suggestion is to put those, I guess you call them delineators over there so people can't make the left turns. Kind of like over by the shopping center where you got those things, uh, along where people can't make left turns. So that would be my suggestion. I don't know about redesigning the whole thing, but, uh, I think, uh, if that's the issue. As far as raised crosswalk, personally, I have no problem. I can go over it at 30 miles an hour.
Aloha, I have two things. The first one is, um, I'd like to know if you're amenable to having more conversation about your comment and not it not being unsafe for bicyclists. We've heard differently. Um, and so I'm hoping that you're amenable to that because I really think that it's a huge problem. But then second, uh, several residents that live on Kalani Anioli Highway with homes that are right in that vicinity. They're very thankful because they said that they have noticed a substantial difference in the vehicles racing. And I had heard you had said something about vehicles clocking up to 60 or 70 miles an hour. So on behalf of a couple of residents that live right there, I'm saying thank you and that they're very appreciative for it. But then on the other hand, I'm asking if we could talk about not installing more of those speed bumps without greater consideration for the bicycling, uh, community. Thank you.
Jean?
Yeah, I have one question. Um, you mentioned that there was two weeks notification. How is that notice made?
Generally, we, we put out a press release. And that press release goes out to all the media. I was, to tell you the truth, I was trying to look for that press release and at this moment I could not find that. So, you know, I'm, I have to check again to see if something did go out. But that is usually our, our standard for any type of lane closures or construction starts. That we usually give release a two week notice to everyone.
Uh, is that something that, um, whenever you do a press release related to Hawaii Kai, you could send to us?
I think so. Uh, let me talk to our, um, public affairs people. I think that is possible. It's also put on our, well, I guess we always put the weekly lane closures on, on our website. But I can, I can talk to them about that.
Miss, really appreciate that you're here tonight and can respond to some of our questions. I'm sure that the speed hump is going to improve safety for our pedestrians. But, um, I think that the surprise of the speed hump, uh, was what bothered many of us. If we had known ahead of time, um, and could have alerted the community about what was coming, uh, it would have alleviated a lot of the, um, concerns about it.
Understand.
Uh, one more comment, Elizabeth.
Do, do you think it might, uh, be a good idea for the board to send a letter to Mr. Sniffin? Uh, welcoming him to share the press releases with the NCO office as well as Chair Mayor as it relates to anything in Hawaii Kai? Um, you think that might be a good idea instead of just waiting to see if you speak with somebody?
Um, it, it doesn't hurt.
Um, so Mr. Kimora, I understand that your, your office is going to continue to study the illegal left turns into and out of Portlock Road.
Correct.
And so we can anticipate that there will be some kind of mitigation from your office. Or you will at least tell us why it's not possible.
Correct.
Okay, great.
I also have one more item that was a concern. It's okay.
Yes, what is it?
So the other concern was the Cocoa Head Marina driveways. And concerns, I think this has always been an ongoing concern with the community. And so anyway, we have initiated a study of these driveways. And looking at possible options to improve the traffic operation and safety. And right now we have anticipated schedule of data collection this September with a final report sometime in March of next year.
Is this data collection of Kalana Anoole traffic and that, um, left turns out of the Cocoa Marina Shopping Center?
Correct.
All right, great. So, um, it is my understanding that the Hawaii Department of Transportation is going to be addressing our concerns on Kalana Anoole Highway because it is considered a state highway?
Yes.
All right. And then our other concerns for traffic mitigation and speed mitigation in other parts of Hawaii Kai might be city and county then?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So we're going to be looking forward to receiving, uh, some future reports from HDOT. And, um, Galen had indicated that he was going to try to be present at our meetings perhaps once a quarter. So, um, I, I will look forward to that and I'll make sure that we have a space on our agenda for updates from HDOT. And one more comment, Paige?
So Mr. Kimora, just to put a bug in your, I don't know long, how long you've been with DOT, but the discussion of, uh, ins and outs at Cocoa Marina Shopping Center have been discussed, um, for years. It's, it's been a topic of conversation for many years, um, actually decades. And, um, I, I will, I would appreciate if before you guys make any, uh, changes, before you make any decisions as to what you, you want to do or what you're planning to do, that you come to the board and you talk to us, inform us, um, about what's, what you guys are, are, are looking at and thinking about doing. And also, one of the things that was proposed, um, was a traffic signal situation like they have in New Valley. And at the time, the community was dead set against, um, the triple, um, uh, stoplights. So I don't know if that's something you guys are considering or if it's on the table. It's something I think you might want to bring to the community and to get our input before you guys make any decisions and start construction.
Yes, that is the plan. We will come back and do a presentation of the options that were evaluated and whether there are other concerns or other options that you would want us to look at. Uh, this is going to be a very challenging one because the fact that the driveways are giving access to a privatey, the shopping center, which, which, uh, in the past has been a challenge for us to even have discussions with them.
Okay, thank you very much. We look forward to future reports.
Okay, thank you.
Can you stop sharing your screen?
Uh, yes, I will.
Thank you. All right, we're going to be moving on our, on our agenda to community announcements. Are there community announcements from our board members or members of our audience? Elizabeth and then Joel?
I have two community announcements and invitations for the community. One is on May 11th at 8:30 AM. The gates to Havaia Heau and Kiabava Wetland will be open, so you're welcome to come by and learn a little bit about that unique cultural heritage preserve. You can also stay in Malama the Aina if you're interested. The other one is on, um, May 18th and we're really excited. At 10 AM at the Halei, at that same property, is going to be a talk story with Manalua.net. And this is a really great opportunity for you to learn about Manalua, also known as Hawaii Kai. And the focus of the talk story is Manalua, a sense of place. So it's free. We welcome you to come. And Marie Kirk is just quite the compelling, um, speaker and storyteller. Uh, so again, please, um, consider attending. Mahalo. Pardon me, on the 11th of, for Community Work Day or just come learn about the site. It's at 8:30 AM till around 11:30. And, uh, for the talk story, it's on the 18th and that starts at 10 AM. I recommend coming at about 9:30 because you have to walk from the curb up to the Halei. Thank you.
Joel?
On April 17th, the City Council unanimously certified Honolulu City and County to be a Purple Heart City-County. With anticipation that the State of Hawaii will follow sometime later this year. That's significant to anybody who has a military member in their family, direct or remote. Purple Heart is the oldest medal ever given to military service members. And it is specifically and limited to those that are wounded in combat. That's just announcement.
Other community announcements? I do have a couple of announcements that I've received through correspondence. Uh, one from Hawaiian Electric is about a pole replacement on Thursday, um, May 2nd. Hawaiian Electric crews will replace a utility pole and transformer along Kalana Anoole Highway in Hawaii Kai on Thursday, May 2nd, impacting traffic in both directions from 8:30 AM to 2:30 PM. The work will close the right eastbound lane and left westbound lane of the highway between Keahole Street and approaching Luna Lila Home Road, so fronting Cocoa Marina Center. Okay, another announcement is that the Island Sound Studios LLC is planning on applying for special liquor licenses for May 4th, 11, 18, 25, June 1st, 8, 15, 22, 29, and July 6th, 13, 20, and 27 at their site located at 377 Keahole Street, Suite D3. This will be a closed indoor music event for about 50 to 100 people and will only be on Saturdays. Another announcement is that the Department of Planning and Permitting has issued a draft environmental assessment for construction of a new two-story, single-family dwelling that enclose 40-foot shoreline setback. So the developers have requested a variance to the 40-foot shoreline setback. If, uh, the ad, address is 6973 Kalana Anoole Highway in Hawaii Kai. If there is, um, a request for an environmental assessment, DPP will hold a hearing at some future date. At this time, DPP anticipates a finding of no significant impact for this project. If you have any questions, I do have a contact, uh, number that we could make contact. All right, questions? Elizabeth?
May I have a, take a picture of that because I, on behalf of the board, I'd like to ask some questions and then share it back with you to share. Thank you.
Any other community announcements? Herb?
A young lady over there by the door was raising her hand. I think she has a walker.
Okay, I don't think anybody online has heard your question, so I'm just going to repeat it. And the question is, uh, you think that granting such a variance would be setting a poor precedent? Okay, thank you. Any other community announcements? Yes, would you please come on up?
Aloha, ka koa, pa'omai ka pe'ina'i, ka la'i, ai ka la'avele'ole, hua'ano'a'i, kialoha. Um, my name is Malia Marquez. I'm here to give an update in regards to the Mauna Lua signage in the entrance of Hawaii Kai. I've been in correspondence with Tommy Waters', um, administration with Amanda DeBida. I see her up there. And, um, she had let me know that as for the city goes, they had, um, put the Hawaii Kai Mariners Community Association as the grantor to that Aina and to that sign. And so this morning Beverly Little called me, who is the agent to the H, um, to the Hawaii Kai Mariners Community Association. And she had forwarded my emails to, um, her boss, who is Charlie Hunter, while I'll be getting in touch with. Still very preliminary in designs. I didn't really want to be the only one. I didn't really want to be the only one. I wanted community input for this, for this project. But it is slowly moving forward, and I look forward to meeting with Anne Marie Kirk as well as Charlie Hunter. My cousin has some connections to laborers that will provide and donate time and expertise. And as well as, we got information from Beverly, of course, anybody, whenever we finalize and able to start working on that sign, needs to be insured for a million dollars. So I have all of this in my notes. And lastly, the outpour of messages that I've gotten all over social media and emails and actual letters to my home in support to the board, because out of about 150 that I've gotten to read, there was only about two that were not in support. So I mahalo you. Yes.
Malia, thank you for that update. Are you open to questions? Elizabeth has a question.
I just wanted to thank you because the timing of this is so important. For those who don't know, the state GIS maps were recently updated. Two exciting things that are pertinent for us is that the state GIS map now shows that Manalua is its own Ahupuaha. And so more than ever, it's important for us to help bring back that name. And we can share it with Hawaii Kai as you've recommended, but I'm really proud of that. And the other one that the state GIS did also update is Kuleo. It's now its own Ahupuaha. So thank you for that.
It's remarkable because Mauna Lua was under the Ahupuaha and the, the Ili of Waimanalo until 1859, until our Alexander Lejoliho Kamehmeha IV, actually in the Kingdom of Hawaii, put Mauna Lua in our own Ahupuaha because of the importance of our Lo'oi'a, our fish pond, and the richness of this Aina being its own entity. So mahalo.
Thank you, Malia. Any other community announcements? If not, are there any public-generated issues? These are concerns that the public would like to bring to our attention, which is not on our agenda tonight. Hi, come on up. Introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Laura Clisbee. I work here at Hahaione Elementary School as ASM Educational Assistant. And one of my roles here is as crossing guard. So I'm bringing up the raised sidewalks again, but it's my belief that raised crosswalks at the entrance to our school and over here at Aina Pole help decrease traffic so everybody's safer walking across the street, mostly the children. It's been an ongoing issue throughout the year. So I believe a more proactive approach is necessary to keep everybody safe and prevent any future accidents. My hope is that you all agree with that safety is, I'll agree with safety that raised crosswalks will bring. And if not that, I know all your knowledge, you have some way to improve the situation.
Uh, yes, Sam?
Thank you for bringing that to light. Could you provide the board and the community with a specific example that you witnessed that is making this a priority?
Yes. When we use a crosswalk, we're very visible. We wear our vests and we have a sign, both signs, ones say stop from either side. I even brought it if you want to see it. And we will whistle as we cross the street. But as we go across the street, say, I will walk half, I have them stand on either side of the street until I make sure it's clear. So going to midline of the road and bring, then bring, once everybody stopped, I will bring them across the street. They don't always slow down when we're, as they're approaching, so it's a little, maybe they're going too fast. It's hard to say because after a few near misses, it's, it kind of makes you a little nervous. But anyway, once I go to the midlines point, then I have them cross the street. But as they cross the street and go past the midline onto the other side, people will come on the other side of the crosswalk, just block it already. So as we go back, they're already blocking the crosswalk, so it's, it's not safe.
All right, Herb?
I just want to let you know through the St. Streets Meeting that Rep Ward had, that the city is very, their first priority is the schools. So Roger Martin and his guy that was with him said that. I don't think this, not that it makes a difference, is Rep Ward's district, but the guy whose district this is, hasn't been at a meeting in a long time. So I just, with that in mind, I'm going to ask Rep Ward to maybe talk to Mr. Martin and see if they can check theirs. I, I believe I heard your school is kind of on there, but they, but they're, you know, they got to put it all together. So, yeah.
All right, Martha, what is your last name?
Laura. Laura Clisbee. Laura Clisbee. No, it's okay. I'm called many different things.
Thank you very much for bringing this up. All right, we're going to be moving, oh, another public-generated issue?
Name is Joseph Pugh, President of Palm Valley, Section 7. I think tonight, midnight, our HOA insurance goes into effect and it was raised 400% over the years, driving potentially two neighbors that I spoke about of the area for cost affordability. So I wasn't sure that was an issue that could be brought to the board. I know probably Kim on the phone is aware of it, but just if you've heard other HOAs and other folks experiencing the same thing, and if there has been a solution or a positive outcome in any of those scenarios. So not necessarily a question for you, but more information gathering or any ideas if there was any tonight, just for the sake of that.
Uh, last name was Hughes?
Pugh.
Pugh. Thank you so much, Joseph. This, this has come up. I think the legislature also is very much aware of it because there are some condominiums that are not able to, to purchase the premiums because they're so high. So I think that the community is aware of it. I don't know that we can do too much about it, but we'll certainly, you know, monitor the situation. And what condo are you representing?
Kalamakua, Okuhano Street, right there next to the shopping center.
Okay, thank you. Comments? Yes, Herb?
Yeah, I suggested to Kim to go and check up on your, your board and your managing agent because $700 increase is crazy because we got insurance for our wooden structures for an average of $60 a unit. You know, so don't know what's going on with your board and with your association.
Kim, you have your hand up?
I would just like to ask Rep Ward if there was anything that he could do. My understanding is that the bill that is passing through the legislature is not going to help, and that is via some of the insurance agencies and people that I have spoken with. There's also been a couple of calls to the Insurance Commissioner, and we do not seem to be getting any response back whatsoever. So if Tommy Waters or Rep Ward could step in and help us out, we would greatly appreciate it. There are a couple places besides Kalamakua that cannot even get insurance at all. So there's definitely something going on that needs to be addressed, and the state needs to sort of step in and, and help these people out.
All right, any other comments, questions? Okay, well, thank you, Joseph, for bringing this to our attention. And we're going to be moving on to our presentations. And the first item tonight is a special management area use permit application for Bank of Hawaii for a branch at Hawaii Kai Town Center. Our presenter is Greg Nakai, who is the Planner and Senior Associate of PBR Hawaii. Welcome, Greg.
Good evening. Thank you, Neighbor Board and members of the community, for this opportunity to present this Bank of Hawaii Hawaii Kai project. With us tonight is our representatives from the applicant from Bank of Hawaii. Natalie Fogle, the Director of Corporate Real Estate and Facilities. Scott Yoshihara, the Director of Branch Facilities. Ahia Williams, Senior Market Manager, as well as the Project Architect, Steve Marlet from NC3 Architects. Also on the project team, but not here tonight, are the Civil Engineers at Dempsey Pacific, Transportation Engineer, WSP USA. Archaeologist, Culture Consultant is ASM affiliates. My name is Greg Nakai. I'm with PBR Hawaii, where they're planning consultants for this project. Also online on the webex tonight is Vincent Shigequini, also from PBR Hawaii, who is available to answer any questions as well. Bank of Hawaii is, is planning to open a new branch at the Hawaii Kai Town Shopping Center, located Hawaii Kai at the intersection of Kalanaanaole Highway and Keahole Street. This new branch is being planned in order to meet additional community need and will replace the existing Opak Steakhouse building. The project is located on the property identified by XMAP Key or TMK 1-3-9-017 parcel 040. And it's located in the Special Management Area or the SMA. The address is 6650 Kalanaanaole Highway. The landowner is Bishop Trust Estate or Kamehmeha Schools. The parcel area is 0.25 acres or less than 10,920 square feet. And existing uses are commercial uses, a standalone restaurant building, former, former Opak Steakhouse and Scratch Kitchen. The State Land Use District is urban, and the East Honolulu Land Use Map designates the area as Regional Town Center. And the Land Use Ordinance zoning district is B2, Community Business. The flood zone is Zone AE, areas of 1% annual chance flood, the base flood elevation of 90. The project will involve the demolition of existing, of the existing standalone restaurant building with a footprint of 7,213 square feet, and it will be replaced with a new Bank of Hawaii branch bank building, smaller, brown floor footprint, approximately 6,000 square feet. Once the bank is in operation, there'll be no reduction in the number of existing parking stalls. Here is a conceptual floor plan. This is subject to change, but this is approximately a little under 6,000 square feet, includes bank towers, consultation rooms, conference rooms, restrooms. The current construction estimate is $3 million. The anticipated start of construction is upon the approval of environmental assessment, the SMA permit, and the building permit. The estimated construction duration is 10 months. As a requirement for the SMA permit, an environmental assessment is, will be conducted. The pre-assessment consultation letters are mailed out in February. The deadline for comments ended in March, but there will be a 30-day public comment period upon the publication of the draft EA. The determining agency for this EA is DPP. On August 30th of 2023, DPP made the preliminary determination that a major SMA permit will be required. The DPP file number is 2023/Log 1577. The major SMA permit application will be submitted concurrent with the EA. And after DPP accepts the application, DPP will review the application, hold a public hearing, and make a recommendation to City Council. At City Council, there will be two meetings, two hearings, first with committee and then with the full council for their decision. And we're available for any questions.
Some questions. I'm going to ask the first one. Is this a single-story building?
For that to make point, the architects?
Steve Marlet with MC Architects. Steve Marlet with MC Architects. Currently, the design is for a single level. We're investigating potential partial or, or whole second level, possibly of a building.
Questions? Elizabeth and then Paige?
We take our view sheds very seriously, and when we drive into Manalua, our view sheds are important. So a two-story building there is, at this point in time, I could tell you for myself, not welcomed, FYI. So when you say that it's a smaller footprint and it's 6,000 square feet, but don't mention that there's the possibility of a second story, I'm going to ask you next time to state that very clearly, just FYI. The other thing I wanted to ask you is, from the curbside, the setback that's consistent with Roy's and that nice greenery, will that be altered or do you think that might maintain the existing look?
Parcel is actually beyond that setback.
I'm aware of that.
The building is pulled back about another eight feet from where the Opak building is located.
So it'll be encroaching closer towards the curb potentially with this design? Further? Thank you. I'm just thinking that that bluff of greenness, as you, you know, as we can all experience it, is appreciated.
Yep.
So just FYI, but please take into effect, view sheds are important, especially when we enter our community. Thank you.
Greg, before we continue with the questioning, could you take down the script, your shared screen? Okay, Paige, go ahead.
So I'm just curious, you guys used to be in Koko Marina across from Zippies. You had a nice big Bank of Hawaii branch over there. That was Kamehmeha Schools property. Then you moved to the kiosk practically over by LNL, which is also KSBE property. And now you're moving to oceanfront property into a space that I can only guess, because I suck at footage, is probably close to the way it was when you were over across from Zippies. So can you, can, can I explain the movement of Bank of Hawaii and what the thought process is to be in a facility and then all that stuff?
To the board and community, Scott Yoshihara. And the question on the movement over the years, so yes, we were at Koko Marina near Zippies for many years, at least since '75. That space was too big and, you know, we were having issues with the facility itself. So when the opportunity came up for the inline space next to the Kalanaanaole side, we took advantage of it. But, you know, lessons learned over the years, although we're in the digital age, our clients still are coming in and they still want in-person contact. So when this opportunity came up for potentially a larger space, more color windows, more consultation rooms, we, we jumped at it and we looked at it. And that's kind of the, the impetus from an operational standpoint, but from a retail and network perspective, you know, it's, it's, we understand the value. It's prime street frontage, it's visible, the accessibility, and it's in a newer center at Upstate.
It's oceanfront. It's not just visible.
Oh, yes.
It's oceanfront. It's one of the first things people are going to see when they drive into Hawaii Kai.
I, and I see it every day as a lifelong resident of Hawaii Kai.
Yeah, and I can't reiterate anymore what Elizabeth said, that a two-story building there, I'm on the same train she's on, that it, I would, it would make me sick to see a two-story building there. It's going to make me sick to see a bank, first of all. It made me sick to see storage, but now to put a bank there is, you know, is just as bad, if not worse. I, I mean, I just, I'm kind of hoping that you guys will find a space to just kind of light there for a while as opposed to, you know, the constant bouncing around Hawaii Kai. I'm a BOH customer anyway, but, but, yeah, it just...
But point taken. On, on the V plane, point taken.
All right, Sam?
Thanks for the presentation. Is Bank of Hawaii currently expanding the space that they have at?
Thanks for the presentation. Is Bank of Hawaii currently expanding the space that they have at Kokomarena?
Thank you for the question. We actually just completed a renovation expansion into the old Ozo Sushi space, and that was five hundred square feet. But still, you know, it opened it up, but feedback from the client bases, could you expand service spacing, privacy? That's again, part of the impetus why we saw Town Center as an opportunity. Thank you.
So what's the current square footage of the office that you?
It's just shy of three thousand square feet.
So this would be double the the square footage.
Yes, Holly.
My question is this, and I am a Bank of Hawaii customer as well. The way you just presented it sounds to me as if it's more about marketing than utilization of either the space or convenience for the customer. You just said that you want it to be visible as you're coming into Hawaii Kai, and you're very proud of it while you're saying it. Is that what it is? This is a marketing thing? Because that makes me CPB, which is right across from you.
I in the driver is the operational side. It's sub three thousand square feet. And again, we still have healthy in-person transaction volumes, over-the-counter transactions, still very brisk. This is a larger space. We can we can open it up, we can accommodate that. But any any retailer, real retail bank, operationally, we're looking for, you know, visible from our client standpoint, accessibility. These are all things we were like, look at, including operations, which is important.
We have a question online. Kaleo, go ahead.
My only question is, is this gonna be a drive-through bank? Do you guys have any plans to make that a drive-through? Or like a drive-up seller?
Oh, I'd drive a ATM. We explored it, but I believe that's not possible with the the current restrictions by the landlord for the lease.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I wanna put my name in right away for a safety deposit box. No, that's not funny, because I when Kahala was still being built, I put my name down and I'm not even close. So are you gonna have safety deposit boxes at your new location?
Yep, we're evaluating that right now, Mr. Schreiner.
Okay, there you go. You got the evaluation. Thank you. And like I, the others say, view plane, just make it look nice. Thank you.
Sam and then Elizabeth.
What was the square footage of the space that you occupied across from Zippies?
Oh, that was, I'd have to check my notes, but it's being five and seven thousand.
But that was stupid.
It it was inefficiently laid out, right? It was a it it was of a certain era and design. And again, we had some facility issues, foundational issues that we had to contend with.
The current structure that's there at seventy-two hundred square feet, that can't be modified and to meet your standards or
The current?
Correct. It needs to probably demolish down, and we need to have a construction site at the most, one of the most usable, visible spots in Monalua for close to a year because of that.
That is an option. Back to the use of the existing structure, that's on the table. But but very clear, point taken on second story and view plane.
Thank you. I was gonna ask, since it's a after-the-fact consideration of this on the second story. How would you potentially fill it? And the other question is, I'm assuming you already have a lease or this is still all exploratory?
We have a lease with HK Town Center.
Okay, okay. And so, yeah, could you answer that question about what your thoughts were of what you were potentially gonna do on the second story?
Some options include, one, an additional consultation meeting space for clients of the bank and or community. Two, we do have a contingent of remote work from home. We have a lot of employees who are in a hybrid environment. That could be another. Or three, potential office space or potential tenants in the community.
Thank you. We do have empty office spaces throughout the community. And thank you for acknowledging how important our viewscapes are. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the question.
Paige.
So if you have a lot of employees who are hybrid and they work from home, then why do you need all that space for the bank?
So, and that's a good question. Thank you. The employees I refer to are non-customer facing, and the employees that are gonna be utilizing it are full-time branch employees. And business partners such as mortgage and so forth.
Well, I will just say this, that that you guys are maybe one-tenth the size of First Twine Bank space where you are now. And your customer service is ten times better. And when they, when they got bigger and they remodeled and they fancied up First Twine Bank, their customer service went into the toilet. So just because you have a bigger space does not mean that your service is gonna get better. And it's and it is and it is about being visible, because if it was really all about service, you'd stay where you are, because it really is good banking service. So I would keep the service and lose the visible.
I know one other comment we've heard from clients, like we have obviously clients in the room, is parking. And that has been a challenge since we relocated there in in two thousand seventeen. So again, part of the impetus of looking at Town Center, more parking, larger shared parking. Because we know, and again, as a resident myself, it can be tight. It can be tight on that side of Kokomarena.
Actually, the park, I I'm also a customer of Central Pacific Bank, which is right across. The parking is horrible. It's it's specifically worse than your current location. So again, I'm gonna agree with Paige. If the goal is to improve customer service, stay where you are. If the goal is to increase your marketing presence so that people can drive by and see your sign, as you stated earlier, then I guess that's what you're achieving, but double-edged sword.
Again, just sharing some comments from from clients that have had a previous. Thank you. Point taken.
Any other comments? All right. If not, I wanna thank all of you for coming and sharing the plans. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. A question from the audience was to ask how long they anticipate waiting to get a permit approved from DPP.
Thank you, Representative Ward. We are, we are optimistic. We're optimistic, but we're in for the long haul. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for coming and sharing your plans.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, the second item under presentations, again, this was something that was deferred from last month. The board wanted to possibly consider overnight park closure hours for beach parks on the Ka'ivi coast. And we asked that the community provide input as to whether this is something that they would like us to pursue. Comments or questions from the board first? Yes, Paige?
I think one of the questions that we had exiting our meeting last month was a definition to what is considered beach and what is considered beach park before we can discuss whether we wanna close it or not.
I had anticipated that Laura Thielen was going to be online. Laura, you are here, aren't you?
I'm here.
Hi, thank you. Laura, I know that the mayor's representative was going to be sharing some information on this as well, but perhaps you can let this group know directly, when we say a park closure, what areas are affected? What does that really mean? What is closed and what remains open?
If I can take a minute to just explain, and for those of you who I haven't or haven't met me, Laura Thielen, I'm the director of the City and County Department of Parks and Recreation. I also used to work at the Department of Land and Natural Resources, so I'm kind of familiar with the issues here. Closures of an inland park are usually pretty cut and dried. It's, you know, you can close the entire park, you can close the parking lot, you can close certain facilities. Closures of beach parks or beach areas are a little bit trickier in Hawaii. Because under the state constitution, people have a constitutional right to access the ocean. So many of you may remember at the beginning of COVID, the governor issued an emergency order closing a lot of public areas, and he actually closed the ocean. And that portion of the executive order had to be lifted because constitutionally, the governor doesn't have the right to close people's access to the ocean. So when we are looking at a beach park, people have the constitutional right, even if the beach park is shut, to traverse the beach park to reach the ocean. And that's in part because of the Hawaii Supreme Court case. Chief Justice Richardson said a constitutional right to access or to the ocean includes access to the ocean. And that's why the public has the right to access through the Waikiki Beach Hotels. That was a seminal case that CJ Richardson passed early in Hawaii's heyday. The other challenge we have with closure of beach parks is under the Hawaii state constitution, people have the right to fish in the ocean. So again, you know, there's two state constitutional rights that people could walk across a beach park to access the beach, just to be in the ocean or to access the beach to fish. The the boundary between where the county park jurisdiction ends and where the beach begins, under Hawaii law, that is the high-water mark of the waves. And that's a boundary that changes. It changes because of erosion rates. And even if you go and get a survey that shows where that line is, those high-water mark surveys or the line surveys are only good for one year, because the law recognizes that that's a dynamic line. In some cases, it accretes and this and the county park may gain area, but in most cases, it's eroding and the county park loses area. But because of the way that boundary line is defined by law and because of those constitutional rights, closures in beach parks tend to be different when anybody is on that border area or down on the beach itself. Or if they're stopped by a police officer because they're walking across the beach, excuse me, walking across the park to go down to the beach. So in a lot of cases, what we'll do in beach parks is we may close the facilities. So at Monalua, the parking lot is closed, the comfort station is closed. You know, those types of improvements, the grassy area is closed, because that's clearly the park area. But again, people can walk through that area and go down to the beach, and the police would have a very difficult time getting any type of citation upheld by the courts.
All right. Thank you, Laura, for that explanation. Any comments from the board members? Is this something that you'd like to pursue further? Yes, Paige?
Thank you for the explanation, Ms. Thielen. I appreciate it. I have a question. In the case of Monalua Bay and also in Sandy Beach, and I think Sandy Beach was mainly our focus coming into tonight. If somebody said to me, where does the beach start and which part is beach park at Sandy Beach, I could take a probably pretty good guess that the beach starts where the curb is from the parking lot. I mean, I could make that guess. I don't know if I'd be right. And then the parking lot and the facilities and then the grassy area, I would also assume would be beach park. So if we were talking about a closure for Sandy Beach, I would think that the that in order to close the beach park, that it would be the parking lot and the facilities and then the grassy area. Is that something, I mean, I know it would have to be completely defined, but is that a pretty decent assumption or am I completely off-base on that?
Sorry, I weather now with the closure affects the grass areas, the tables and benches, comfort stations, canoe halau and the parking lot. And those are quote closed during the closure hours from ten PM to five AM. So if the board wanted to recommend a closure at Sandy Beach Park, you could take a look at similar kind of hardscaped, grass-scape areas of Sandy Beach Park, the parking lot, the grass areas, comfort stations. That said, you know, again, if somebody is in the park and the police go up to the person and say this park is closed, they always have the option to leave. And they also have the option to say, I'm going down to the ocean. And I'm allowed to walk across the park to get there. Now, they may not be able to park in the parking lot. But you, depending upon, you know, people's response on that, people may claim, you know, I'm coming down there to do night fishing, and I have a constitutional right to do that. So I just, I'm raising these things because I think it's important for boards, when they're looking at closures of beach parks, to just be aware there's gonna be people out there that have incredibly strong feelings about this. They may not be attending your board meeting. You may not hear from them, you know, now, and you kind of have to go and find them, because if you vote to support a closure and we go ahead and do one, you're certainly gonna hear from those folks at that point. So it would be good to be reaching out within the fishing community as well as just the general outreach that the board does.
Well, we did hear from them at our last meeting in by in a drove, we heard we heard from them. But but I think one of the concerns that I heard was that parking outside of where the telephone poles are laid down outside of that grassy area, that they were concerned about parking out there. And they were concerned about traversing the park, quote unquote, to get to the sand, to get to the beach, to go to go surf, because they do early morning and nighttime surfing too. So is that something that, I mean, maybe I should ask HPD, but if the park is closed, they're still allowed to do that. Wouldn't they be able to do that, traverse and then go surfing? I mean, that was a huge concern from the last meeting.
Yeah, they're they, I think they would be allowed to do that, but I think they're still gonna be raising safety issues, traversing that, you know, what park area in the dark is gonna be a challenge. And then especially if they have gear and other things with them. So again, I'm just raising the the things that the I've heard over the course of my career from people when dealing with these types of issues about whether to close areas at night. And we recognize that there may be valid reasons that the board wants to consider closing the areas. But it is going to be something where you're gonna be hearing from people on both sides of that issue.
Thank you.
Okay, Elizabeth and then Sam.
Thank you, Director Thielen. Could you speak to Vavamalu section that city has? Because I know that this sort of came to us primarily because of the Sand Dune Restoration Project and chronic issues with people challenging the Pohaku borders that are put up and still trying to make their way onto the sand. So could you speak a little bit about about that? If there was a beach closure, it would, I would assume that it would include that entire area. Is that correct?
No, I'm sorry. I'm just looking online about whether we have anything in that area. I have to go back and take a look at what our policies are on unimproved lands. I mean, we have made a, we have made a secure area so people don't drive on the beach there. But it's not really an improved parking lot. So I'm not sure. Yeah, I'd have to go back and look at that and I'll get back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Director, for your your virtual presence and the shedding some more light on this very complicated issue of park closures as it relates to beach parks. Are you able to give us an idea throughout the city and county of Honolulu, how many other beach parks have some form of closure hours currently enacted? What percentage roughly?
I have a, I have the website up. Doesn't segregate out beach parks from the regular parks.
Laura, you've gotten very faint. Could you speak up?
Sure. If you go to the DPR website, you can, at the top, there is tabs, and one of the tabs is parks. And if you click on that tab, you can get hours. And we have the listing of all the parks that do have closure hours by district around the island. We don't separate them into categories. We don't separate them into categories, so I can't easily total the number of beach parks that are closed. I know Kailua Neighborhood Board for years has rejected a closure there. And I think they've come to us recently with one that may be problematic for other reasons. So we need to discuss it with them. And then, as I said, in some of the other areas, even though we may have a closure, people are still allowed to traverse back and forth, but not to hang out in the park at night. And so that's really, just so that you understand the limitations of it, you can prevent people from hanging out in a park at night and, you know, inside the park area. And when the police come, it does give them a way to say, this park is closed now. Can you please leave? But if people are going down to the ocean or going down to fish, they would still have the right to to access that. So if you want nobody going in there at a beach park, that's going to be more problematic.
I guess I'm just trying to understand, you know, because I've seen that website and it just lists all the parks by name. It's not even any clarity around the numbers of parks that have closure hours. So it's it's trying to get an idea as to whether or not, if this board were to enact some form of closure hours, say, Baba Malu, is that an anomaly to all the other beach parks across the island? Or would you say half of them have some sort of park closure hours? And just roughly, what would your your understanding be as the Director of DPR?
I'd have to go and take a look. We have 305 parks and I don't have, you know, the reason we list it by park name for the closure hours is people are usually looking for a specific park. We'd have to go back and take a look and calculate, you know, the number of beach parks that have closures compared to the total number. I would say it's probably not uncommon.
Elsie?
So when closure is considered, you're not sure if it would just encompass the the part of the park where there's asphalt roads and parking, but also the dirt lots. There's two big dirt lots.
I'm sorry, what was the last part?
Oh, if it would encompass the big dirt lots, which is set up where I think a lot of people park overnight.
Yeah, I would have to go and take a look at what our policies are on the unimproved parks. I don't know that offhand. I know in a lot of cases in the unimproved areas, we just have no trespassing signs. So but in this area, I know we've made an unimproved lot for people to be able to access it. So I'd have to kind of go back and take a look at where, how we've dealt with that in other areas. There's not a lot of them.
Okay, Kim, did you have your hand up? Okay.
May I ask what the behavior is that the board is concerned about in the particular areas? And just because there may be other ways to address it as well. I don't know.
I think that when we took action to close Mauna Lua Bay and Jolukela Beach Parks, that was a safety concern. And the issue of safety after 10 o'clock at night at the beach parks was an issue. And it just came up that maybe we should be looking at all of the beach parks in the East Honolulu area. However, I'm not sure that the board is ready to take any action on closure in further beach parks, but we are concerned about the Vava Vava Malu beach area. So if you're able to find out more information about what DPR jurisdiction is on this undeveloped area, that would be very helpful. And Elizabeth has a comment and then Herb.
And the reason why Vava Malu is so important and sections of Sandy Beach, of course, was because of the return of the nesting turtle as well as the monk seal. And of course, the yellow face bee. And so, you know, that healing of that area is really important. So that monkey business with those trucks really pushing the envelope with stealing the rocks, moving the rocks and then laying their tracks on the sand dune is very upsetting. And we're trying to figure out how best do we mitigate that. So thank you.
Herb?
Thank you, Director Thielen. Yeah, that was going to be my question, but I I just held it off and you answered, you asked it. Is, I'm not aware of any homeless issues or stuff at the park itself. I know that they're across the street in private property. And I think we're just shooting at the hip, in my opinion, for Sandy Beach. So Awawa Malu, you know what? You just got to put up better barriers to keep them off the beach. They're moving the rocks. But yeah, that's my question too, to anybody. Why are we going to close this beach? Because when I was working out here, it was actually probably one of the most organized beaches with the fishermen and, you know, just kids having a, you know, they're going to spend the night and just hang out and play guitar, you know, things like that. And then we want to, we want to cut all our beaches. But I need to know, why are we doing this? Same question you have. Thanks.
Stacy, you have your hand up?
Yes, I I agree with you, Herb, because we originally Mauna Lua Bay, we were addressing the very specific concern, safety with the growing homeless community. And I I agree. I don't know. We haven't identified an issue at Sandy Beach. The unimproved area, absolutely. We should do more due diligence on that. But I agree with you, Herb. I don't know that we've identified an issue. We just started, in my opinion, talking about it. And I'm very sensitive to the community that came out last meeting. And we heard from them loud and clear.
Okay, thank you, Stacy. Another hand up online? Is that Kaleo?
Hi, board. Thank you. Just a couple of things. You know, we keep shutting down, locking down these beaches. And if you go try and drive into Bello is one of the nicest beaches that we have here. You know, throughout Nalo and the east side, you can't go on that beach throughout the week because the military has that beach locked down. And I feel like that's what this conversation is, is trying to hold the, hold back everybody from enjoying why we live here in Hawaii. You know, we have the freedom to go to the beach whenever we want. Sandy's is known as a dangerous beach only because of the shore breaks, but not because of the people who are there. The people who are there actually take care of the beach. The guys who go there in the morning for dawn patrol. They're actually well known there. They're like their own little family out there. And they actually made a nice little grass area where they take care of the water, the grass, they water, they plant their coconut trees. So this is one of the beaches like Herb was saying, that is well taken care of. You got people down there who respect each other. You get the riffraff every now and then. But, you know, with the shortage shortage of HPD, you know, I mean, what can you do? Locking down the beaches, I don't think you can do very much except get the locals mad and upset that slowly everything keeps getting, you know, taken away from us. So I mean, if you guys go there at 5:00 AM and park your truck on the curb and just sit there, you enjoy the nice crisp air, probably one of the most beautiful sunsets you can get without hiking Cocoa Head. I think, you know, the board just has to get back out there in the morning and just talk to the people and get out there. Being in the water in the morning, you know, we go out there. I take my kids there in the morning and they just sit on the sand while I'm in the water and parking your car outside while you're in the water. That's just asking for trouble. But thank you guys very much.
Thank you, Kaleo. Board members, I'm going to ask if there is a motion from the board because if there is not a motion that we move forward with this, I'm going to close the discussion and close this issue. It may arise on a case by case basis if there is a concern that needs to come to the board and we can certainly raise the issue and place it back on the agenda. But is there a board member that would like to make a motion that we proceed with closing beach parks, other beach parks in East Honolulu? All right, I don't see anybody who's want to
Including Vava Malu, is that still on the table as far as discussion goes? Are we getting
Well, I'm saying that if there is an issue, we can bring things back on a case by case basis. When we find out a little bit more about DPR's jurisdiction on the undeveloped areas at Vava Malu Beach, we can certainly discuss that beach further at another time. Yes, Greg?
I'm not certain, but I thought that technically even Sandy Beach is Vava Malu. And it also falls under the jurisdiction of Hanama Bay all the way to the Allen Davis Wall. That's all under one. So according to the Parks Department, they may have different administrative concepts than having a distinction between Sandy's and Vava Malu and all that.
Ms. Thielen, you're still online. I think that you've heard Greg's concern wondering whether Vava Malu is actually part of Sandy's or part of that Hanama Bay beachfront shoreline. And so we're not going to pursue this at this point, but I think that we would need some clarification, you know, from your office if we need to perhaps address issues at Vava Malu Beach, whether we can take that on separately or whether it's part of the Sandy Beach issue. Go ahead.
I guess what I encourage the board to do is to hone in on what your goal is. So because the closure may be a bit of a blunt instrument, you know, because of the, if you're really looking at securing that parking area to prevent trucks from getting through there because the boulders haven't been successful, then maybe what the board's looking for really is a more secure parking area where the trucks would not be able to, the bad eggs would not be able to move it. Because really, if your problem is people who are doing something like moving the boulders, they're going to ignore a closure anyway. So a more targeted approach might be a better one. But again, I don't want to presume that's the board's primary interest. And so I think if we can have more of a discussion offline about what your your specific goals are, then maybe we can come up with some solutions that would be tailored to that and not have to look at something more like a closure, which may or may not be as effective.
I think that's a very good point. And I think that you might have already hit it on the head that we are concerned about preserving that area that we've newly rehabilitated or rehabilitated. And we want to make sure that trucks longer drive on the dunes and destroys the plants and the nests. So perhaps your office could do more in terms of securing that area, the parking areas?
We'll talk with Board Member Riley about options and some things that we can do. We've been working with the council member on the west side on securing some areas. We have found that people are very determined and very creative, finding ways to break through stuff. I wish they could, you know, bent their creativity towards another another direction. But yeah, we'll we'll see what we can do and let it and talk with Board Member Riley and maybe we can come up with some ideas. We are probably going to need some additional resources. And maybe we can turn to partners like DOT and the military and some other folks.
By the way, is Brian Kimura still online? Mr. Kimura?
Yes, I am.
Great. One of the things that we have been advocating for are guardrails along Vava Malu Beach, along Kalanaanaole Highway. And that would really help us. The city and county has been helpful in moving boulders to try to prevent off off road vehicles from going onto the sand dunes. But we know that guardrails along that stretch of the highway would be much more effective. And so if this is something that your office could take a look at, would be greatly appreciative.
I can go and take it back again. I know in the past, our main concern is that we usually don't use the guardrails to restrict access because of the fact that, you know, the maintenance and the fact that it is obstruction in itself. But I'll take it back to what discussion.
Thank you. I do appreciate that. Okay, board members, I'm going to be taking this item off the table.
A gentleman waiting to, oh, okay. All right.
Okay. Thank you, board members. Thank you, members of the audience. I know some of you are very interested in this, but we're not going to pursue it. And if there is an issue about a particular stretch of the shoreline, we'll address it at that time. Okay, we're going on to officials' reports. And first on our agenda is Mayor Rick Blongiardi's representative, Amy Asselby. And Amy, thank you for being with us in person tonight. And thank you, gentlemen and madam from Bank of Hawaii and and our PBR Hawaii. Thank you for coming. Go ahead, Amy.
Thank you, Chair and board members. I have a very quick report tonight, thanks to Director Thielen being here. She covered one of the main issues. But not only are neighborhood boards a way that city officials get input from the community, but there are ongoing town halls. And every single department has either their deputy or director or both at those meetings. So there's like, you know, nearly 50 of us sitting there with the mayor once a week, 13 meetings across the island. And I wanted to make sure that you all knew that on Thursday, May 23rd, the mayor will be holding his town hall at 6:30 PM at Cocoa Head District Park Gymnasium. And any and everyone is welcome. The forum is usually to ask specific questions. Laura at the Department of Parks and Recreation always gets a lot of questions. But I believe the questions usually last for about two hours. So please come. Love to see you there. And so the Speed Humps, state jurisdiction on Kalanianaole, Cocoa Crater Botanical Gardens and the Stables. So there was some question about the $300,000. And I don't know if that meeting was held yet with the Managing Director's Office about the status or, you know, additional use of the funds. But I think this is really a reiteration of what I was told before, which is that the fiscal year '24 CIP budget included $300,000. And that is being used for the plan, design and construction of sustainable and resilient, stable facility improvement. So the focus is to replace the current water line to meet those needs at Cocoa Crater Botanical Gardens, which also includes Sandy Beach Park that shares the same line. The $300,000 currently allocated is for the planning phase of this water line project. So there's no further information that any of that funding is being used for the stable facility itself.
Clarification, Amy. The fiscal year '24 CIP budget includes $300,000 for the water repairs. The $300,000 that was allocated prior, I don't know if it was fiscal year '24 or '23. It was fiscal year '23.
This July will start our fiscal year '25. So the fiscal year '24 was essentially July 1, 2020, when we start our city fiscal year.
So is it the same $300,000 that we're talking about?
Correct.
So it's not going to go to help repair some of the broken down structures at Cocoa Head Stables?
Piece of paper and not any further discussions that it's going towards the water line improvement and planning.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Oh, yes.
Chair, if I may chime in?
Yes, Ms. Thielen, go ahead.
Sorry to interrupt. There are two $300,000 appropriations. They're going to be consolidated to go for the water line. The water line serves the stables. And one of the challenges the stables has had in the past is that water line frequently breaks. It is ancient. It's called It's probably nearly as old as I am. And when it breaks, the horses can't survive for a day without water. So water trucks need to be brought up to to water the horses until the line can be fixed. So we deem that to be one of the critical infrastructures. That same line also serves the botanical garden and Sandy Beach. So we're going to get, that's why there's a second $300,000. And by combining the two, we'll be able to complete the planning and then ultimately fix the water line.
Thank you, Ms. Thielen. That was very important clarification that there are two pots of $300,000. So there was some confusion. Yes, Herb?
Yeah, she said two $300,000 pots going to one project for three locations. And from what I understand, they're going to be doing the water at Hanama Bay too. But I just want to make it known that I was sitting in the mayor's office when they promised to make the stables right after it was raided by Horse Haven. And now they're saying the money that they put through that they told us was going to go to the Cocoa Crater Stables is not going to go. Oh, it's going to go with the water. That's that's ridiculous. Okay? And then throw on other projects. So I I was told by the mayor that they will make it right and that the $300,000 was going to Cocoa Crater Stables to demolish buildings that are supposed to be demolished. They're dangerous. And to help bring back the the stable, the the I'm not even a big horse person, but where they where they put the horses, they took everything out. And now the next business moves in and they can't do their business. And they've all known this. So I don't know who's talking out of which side of their mouth, but that 300,000 was supposed to go. And that's not even enough.
Okay, let me let me just, Director Thielen, can you please clarify the $300,000 that we initially thought was going to the stables? Is that also going to go to support the water project?
So, yes. So again, in the past, this water line, which I think was, I think it was built in 1967.
Okay, okay, no, I
Goes to the stables when that it goes across a quarter mile of the side of the crater and is disintegrating. And when the water line broke and the stables would have no water for multiple days while they were searching to find where the broken line was, the horses were at serious risk and they needed to bring water trucks up. And it was a very huge impact on the operation. So we deemed that getting water to the stables is one of the critical needs that have to be addressed in order for the operation to be viable there.
All right. A comment from Elizabeth?
With all due respect, I agree with Herb. I was one of the people that heard that that 300, that our first $300,000 was going to go towards making our community asset whole. Unfortunately, when previous administration took it out of our district park plan and moved it into enterprise services, which has a different mission for caring for a community asset, things started going bad to the tune of now having a community asset that is not usable. And it is just so sad to have stood there and have heard from our elected officials that that fund was going to make that community asset whole. I do understand the need for the water, but I really think and encourage that the city goes back, the administration, whomever, and reevaluate this and don't leave us with a broken promise and a community asset that is not usable. It's very unfair. Had I not been there and heard about the $300,000, I wouldn't be speaking right now. But what am I supposed to do about a promise that was made to this community? And now accept the fact that it's going to go towards water lines? Something else has to get done here to rectify this community asset that we have been waiting to be made whole. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everybody, for your input. Amy, back to your report.
I'm glad Director Thielen was here because I do get my notes from the offices, but really appreciate the clarification. And the last issue that I have to share some feedback on today was the great repair on Lane N in Portlock. The Department of Facilities Maintenance is the department that will do the repair. And they say the work is scheduled to be completed by the end of June 2024. So there's a date. There was never a date before. Yes. And I am taking back the question, obviously, to make sure that the caring on Baba Malu and which jurisdiction in terms of the DPR administration is involved there. And if there's any other questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Elizabeth?
It would be wonderful if we could get a handle on this Cocoa Crater situation and not have to bring it to a town hall meeting. Because there's so many other things that we could be talking about at a town hall meeting instead of this aging issue that's been with this board for over a year. Thank you.
Herb?
The paper you're referring to, is it from, well, it wouldn't be from the Department of Parks. They no longer run Cocoa Crater Stables. Is that from DES?
I believe DES is part of DPR.
No, it's not. Laura could explain how relationship works. I believe they handle their commercial activity in Department of Parks and Recreation sites, but.
So I think the city years ago created the Department of Enterprise Services and they took, like Ocean Safety used to be in the Parks Department, then it became, it moved out. Enterprise Services was created and moved out of parks to take over, like the golf courses used to be in the Department of Parks and Recreation. So anything where people were paying a fee, Blaisdell Golf Courses, Shell, that all became Enterprise Services and it's a separate department. So they handle concessions where we do have concessions in parks and also handle their own jurisdiction. So the stables is a concession that is managed by DES.
Thank you for that clarification, Director Thielen. But Amy, this has been on our agenda for the last year because we have been hoping to see some progress.
Well, and you have the answer from Director Thielen. That is how the money is being used. And until additional money is appropriated, I think you can understand what the response is. And the town hall is on May 23rd, where you have an opportunity to bring up this concern and ask for action.
We shall do that.
Yes.
So let the mayor know.
And Chair, Mayor, I'm sorry to belabor the point, but I think the other
Yes, go ahead, Director.
Other challenge is the funding that was appropriated is bond money. And bond money can only be used, because it's in the capital improvement budget, it can only be used for improvements that are going to have a lifespan for the entire life of the bond. So that's usually 20 to 25 years or longer. You cannot fund a demolition with bond money. You cannot fund an improvement like fixing a roof with bond money. That has to be done with operating money. So the appropriation was limited by law as to what the funds could be utilized for. And that's one of the reasons why we came up with the water line is because we knew that that was essential for the stables. Multiple departments have gone up there and done work on the stables to provide assistance utilizing our operating budget funds and our staffing. So we have done a lot of work up there, you know, a year ago. But the bond money is limited to capital improvements with a lifespan of 20 years or more.
Okay, thank you, Elizabeth. Last comment?
Thank you for clarifying that. But then perhaps the promises that were made about the original $300,000 shouldn't have been made. And we would have then been able to go to our city council and look for another means of capital improvements for funds to come into the district. So I'm just just sharing that with you. Promises were made and unfortunately, they've changed. Or whoever was making those promises from the administration should have been a little bit more clear. And again, we've missed this opportunity now to have secured funds through city council for it. I do know that the city has come up there and has assisted. And you're right, it has been over a year. But currently, you have structures that the city has condemned. And it is unfair not to be able to run programs because we have structures that the city has condemned and they're still sitting there. So I just want to point that out to you. Maybe a little bit more Kukua from the city could be helpful. But leaving it the way that it is right now, you can't run a business. Thank you.
Okay, Amy, before we let you leave the podium, is there any update on the shooting range and the hours and when it'll be open on more than just the weekends? Did they hire the second person? Do you know?
I think you have the
Oh, Director Thielen. Do you have any update for us on the shooting range and the hiring of staff?
Right. The last time I talked to the district manager, we have hired the, we have two full-time civil servants. One of the are the range masters. We have hired one. They are still recruiting for the second one. But with the one in there, I think they've been able to expand the hours. I'd have to go again and take a look online. But we're trying to get the second position filled and then we have the contract positions that are assisting the range masters and those are filled. But they just basically need the second position to be able to get back to full hours. We have reopened the skeet and trap range. And then we're working on some improvements to be able to reopen the silhouette club range as well.
Okay, thank you very much. Yes, Greg?
So your last comment on the silhouette range, is a cleanup going to occur so that that's, it's just saturated with spent bullets in the whole surrounding area and even outside the range. There are many places where bullets have landed, which are obviously outside of the safety zone.
So we brought in a national consultant and expert on outdoor shooting ranges. And he toured the site. And based on his opinion, we do not need to do the cleanup at this point. It's not at the point where it would be required under outdoor shooting range standards and guidelines. But we are having funding in for a capital improvement project. And when we do that capital improvement project, we'll be making some additional improvements. As you may know, the wall between the pistol and rifle range, a portion of it had to be taken down. So it's now operating as a single range. We'd like to be able to rebuild that wall. We also will do a lead reclamation and rebuilding of the backstops. The current improvements that need to be done for the silhouette range is some interim backstops and then the backstop itself. And then resetting up which where the firing lines are so that you separate them from the area where the water comes through. And that's again, based on the report that was done by the expert.
All right, thank you. But Amy, could you follow up next month to let us know if the HR has filled that position? And whether hours of operation have increased? Okay, but thank you very much for being here. And Director Thielen, much for being here online. You clarified a lot of things for us tonight. We appreciate that.
My pleasure.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Okay, City Council Chair Tommy Waters's office. I think we have a representative online.
Good evening, everyone. Amanda Zepeda here for Council.
Hello, Amanda.
Good evening. Amanda Zepeda here for Council Chair Waters's office. I've got our contact information in the chat as well as the link to our District Four webpage and our April newsletter. Lots of great information in the newsletter, especially about the budget. And I just wanted to mention, since we've been discussing Cocoa Head Stable, Cocoa Crater Botanical Garden, that there is another $500,000 in the in the current budget, the fiscal year '25 budget that's currently being considered. I just wanted to mention that as well as other things. And I just have a couple of things other than what's in the newsletter. Just wanted to report back that we've received quite a bit of positive feedback from community members on the general improvement at Monoloa Bay since the park closure went into effect. So that's the one I wanted to mention. And then another thing that came up was we received quite a number of complaints about homes along Hawaii Kai Drive having too much concrete. And so I just wanted to remind that County Ordinance 19-3 requires that the impervious surfaces area of a zoning lot cannot exceed 75% of the total zoning lot area. And as well, anything that has happened subsequent to the initial development of the lot that hasn't been permitted in terms of additional concrete does require a building permit. So I just want to throw that out there in case anyone is interested in that information. And then the big item that we wanted to highlight today is an issue that we've been discussing is the Senate Bill 3203, sorry, 3202, which is up for final vote tomorrow at the legislature. And it it came very quickly, as some folks may know. And today Chair Waters and Vice Chair Kiaina sent out a letter to all the senators and representatives just sharing their very strong concerns over the current draft of the bill. And we sent some information to the neighborhood boards as well as the community at large. So we're just encouraging folks to get to know what's happening with that issue and to reach out to your senators and representatives and just share your thoughts and your mind on that and the potential impacts that that may have if passed. And with that, I'm happy to take back questions or concerns that you may have.
Okay, Elizabeth?
If you could please extend thanks to Waters for the email that he sent out through the neighborhood board. That's very appreciative. And I was wondering if there's been conversation with the mayor about this and is the mayor on board with council's position? I mean, I certainly appreciate council's position. I'm just kind of wondering how strong is our voice going to be tomorrow?
Yeah.
That's my one. I've got another question, but I'll let you answer that.
You know, I'm not sure. I'm really not. I haven't heard anything specific from the mayor about his position on it, so I'm really not sure.
Okay, because I know that neighbor islands don't have sustainable community and general plans like we have, which are hundreds of thousands of dollars and man-hours and community time.
Absolutely.
So we'll see what happens. Okay, thank you for that. Quick question on the 500K that you mentioned, I think, that's in the budget for 2025? Is there a way of speaking with your office about about that and what it's earmarked for and seeing if some of it can go towards our community asset of Cocoa Crater Stables?
Sure, sure, definitely. We can Sure, sure, definitely. We can discuss that further. I don't think... I didn't see anything specific that it was meant for. But I think, you know, we do have an opportunity to add an approval, I believe, for those funds and what we want to see it go towards. Absolutely.
Can we... Can Herb and I touch base with you tomorrow about that?
For sure.
Thank you so much.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Herb, did you want to comment?
No, I was just gonna ask, is it being submitted properly so that the stables can be brought back to life? Instead of throwing in a CIP for something that's going to last 25 years? In fact, the Koko Crater Stables should last for 25 years after it gets fixed.
Yeah, thanks for that. And it's good we had this discussion tonight because I wasn't aware of that. And I believe it is in the CIP, so I can take that back and just ensure that if not in that particular item, we might be able to put something else into the operating budget for that if necessary. But I'll... We'll have that conversation and definitely address that.
Okay, and I think we have a hand up online. Wendy? Wendy Din? You're muted, if you're trying to speak.
I'm sorry, but I put down my hand because I didn't know what the subject was about, but now I do, so I put down my hand. So thank you.
All right, thank you, Wendy. Amanda, I just wanted to indicate my appreciation to Council Chair Waters and Vice Chair Kia Aina for their letter against Senate Bill 3202. Board members, the board took a position against this bill as well. And even though it's gone through several iterations, it really has not addressed the problem. And it seems to be catering to developers, small and large developers. Because it says that you can build two accessory dwelling units on your property so you could have three units on your residential lot. So a developer who has... who owns 100 residential lots could conceivably build two more units on all of those lots and have 300 units to sell at market price. The bill still does not... There's nothing in there about what's affordable. And you know that all of these homes will be sold at whatever the market will bear. So this bill is still not addressing the problem of providing affordable housing for people in Hawaii. So anyway, we'll hope that the legislature tomorrow will vote the bill down. But anyway, we've taken our position. Our voice has been heard, but we'll see what happens with the legislature.
Thank you so much for the support. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Amanda. We have a comment. Are you not able to come up to the microphone? Okay, hold on. We're bringing the microphone to you.
Sorry. I was just curious about our utilities. We're already promised to have rolling blackouts. Oh, I apologize. Sheriff Sullivan, I live in Mariners Ridge. And watching all the building that's going on in Kakaako and then allowing everybody to... All the developers to build more and more and more. Our island... We live on an island, for God's sakes. I think our resources are going to get diminished. I don't want to live like California, and that's what's happening. We're... Too many people coming in, too much building, and we only have so much water. We only have... Kiko has shut down one of their major plants, so I just think any expansion is a bad idea. I think the developers have overdeveloped.
Okay. Any other questions for the city council chair's office? Wendy, you have your hand up again?
Yes, correct. This is a... Because you brought up a different subject. Being a Realtor myself, Kamamea Schools, they have in their DPPs, they have that you cannot build ADUs. Each property needs to have one dwelling only. So how does a developer or nonetheless an owner circumvent the regulations that Kamamea Schools, or formerly Bishop Estate, has perpetuated in their governing documents that it runs with the land? I've seen so many people that have built ADUs, so I just want some clarification on that so I can counsel my clients. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. I don't think any of us can answer that. We're not familiar with those regulations. But the proposed new bill that's going to be voted on tomorrow proposes changing some of the regulations to allow additional units on residential lots. So I don't know how that affects Bishop Estate properties, but that's something that we're not able to answer for you.
Well, in Hawaii Kai, right, most if not all property is built under former Kamamea Schools Bishop Estate property. So I'm anxious to learn about how tomorrow's decision will affect the future of Hawaii Kai. So thank you, though. It may be a good or bad thing, but no matter what, it's... I appreciate that comment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Wendy. All right, we're going to be moving on to Governor Josh Green's... Sorry, go ahead, Paige.
No, I just wanted to say that the operative word that you mentioned, Wendy, was "former." And if it's Kamamea Schools property, then Kamamea Schools, their rules apply. But if it's not Kamamea Schools property, it belongs to the property owner. So Kamamea Schools has no jurisdiction.
Like I said, there are many docs, you know, perpetuated even after they owned it for legal, you know, rights. But yeah, so I would like it the other way where people could build, but I just wanted clarification. So thank you.
Okay, we're going to be moving on to Governor Josh Green's representative, Mike Buck. Thank you, Mike, for staying with us.
Thank you very much. It's funny because one by one, the issues that I was going to talk about have been handled. And one of the things I don't want to do is take any smoke away from Rep. Ward. I've been watching some threads. I'm sure many of you have, neighborhood threads. And Jean has been to be given a tremendous amount of credit. A lot of us are getting a little nervous about what's going on in this area. Before I get into my Josh Green stuff, it's unbelievable how many people are following social media telling us about when Costco is closing. I mean, like tomorrow. And it's just completely untrue. And then the other story was the bank wants to come in and do that change at the... Yeah, with the Outback where it was. It's like surprise. But that's not... One of the things that I wanted to make sure to bring up. First of all, I want to thank you for the last year and a half or so that I've had the pleasure of being here. I'm... As some of you know, I work on four other neighborhood boards as well for the governor. I'm being in transition with some other things. So we're going to be introducing you to a new PIO coming next month. So this will be my last time. It won't be my last time here because, as you know, I'm a resident here and I'm... I like what you all are doing. And if I'm not the PIO anymore, I don't have to worry about taking any heat. I can just come and be one of us. But it has been my pleasure to do that, and I want to tell you that some of the things that we're talking about here is there's never been more, and you'll hear more from Rep. Ward about some of the bills and some of the things that happen in the next couple of days. We have never had the cooperation between the agencies as we do now, between the state, the city, the sheriffs. Everybody else seems to be mentioning it together. I don't know how many of you know the problem that's gone on in some of the other parks where people aren't keeping an eye on. Right across the street from Straub is beautiful Thomas Square Park. Two guys died there night before last, I mean, they died in the park 50 feet away from the hospital. So no matter what you do and no matter what you worry, we have to protect this area. That's one of the reasons why I so have enjoyed bringing your concerns, particularly when it comes to people from outside this area using this area for other reasons. I can tell you that I received more email in the last month on the speed bump than anything else. But I do know that there's some people that want to take it away. But now that we're getting... Some people are getting used to it. I'm not losing any more feeling to my teeth because I go over it at a slower speed. But some of us... And I'm thinking that's why it was great to have Brian Kimura here from the DOT. And maybe we can get Mr. Sniffer to come down here and talk to us as well. The other thing that I want to remind you about is how many of you knew the activity was going on on Diamond Head? I talked to a couple of people earlier about this. Over the last weekend, there were about nine full trucks of garbage taken out of where the homeless are living on Diamond Head, right across the street from the ocean. And there were six that I saw, and this is a good cooperate that there are... At least six huge 800 got junked. They only scratched the surface, and the next day they were back. So that... The reason why I brought that up is because you've done a great job, and everybody has worked because of your, you know, your consistency on trying to keep these places right. And I know the issue between fishing and squatting, and there's squatting going on as we speak. That area looked great for a couple of days, and now it's same old, same old. So you can't get let down. It's a squeaky wheel, and that's why... Because of the inner-agency cooperation, I feel we're getting... We're better off making that phone call. I know, and particularly I had a lovely talk with Paige about it. It's so frustrating when you get something done and then same old, same old just happens all over again. And one of the things that you might find out, and I wanted... I didn't want to take it away from Amy for sure, is the mayor's come up and the police department's coming up with some big signing bonuses. We are hundreds of policemen shy. And no matter what you do, you can only work these guys so hard, and we're losing them. So now there's going to be some money and jingle, and it's amazing what money will do, right? So let us hope that... But it's a squeaky wheel. You must call when you drive by that park, or you walk by that park, or you have your kid by that park. No matter how boring it gets, it's... You gotta call him. You gotta let him know that you're upset, that you want something done about it. And then there's another thing, and once again, I don't take anything away from Rep. Ward, who's done such a great job on that neighborhood string, particularly with getting to the bottom of it. And I don't know how you... I'm sure you can tell everybody about it. Bold and accessible. You see his new sign on the island. And with that, questions?
Elizabeth and then Holly.
Two things, please. One, would you kindly bring back to the governor that this board has taken action to keep our Kaevi Scenic Shoreline name and not change it to Kaevi State Park? Thank you. So if you could...
He is aware.
I know he is, but I need to mention it again because a little birdie told me that it's resurrecting again. And I'm doing my best to be vigilant and open about it. So if you'd kindly share that, I'd appreciate it.
It's done. I will.
Thank you. The other one is a good thing that the governor can do to help would be to veto SB 3202, if indeed it does go through, as it relates to what we were talking about that this board is not in favor of.
That's the greatest thing said. You know, you're on it because there's a lot of us on both sides of the administration. The governor is listening to everybody.
The process is flawed.
Yeah.
Home rules should not apply. You know, this isn't fair, the overreach. And on the island of Oahu, we have sustainable development and a general plan. They don't have that on the neighbor islands. So we take care of our own here at the county level, so he should veto it or have Oahu moved.
Yeah, that's a great point. And I think, Jean, you might have something to say that, too. I think it is going to have a tough time.
Mike, the comment that Elizabeth made about the name change for the Kaevi State Shoreline. We did send a letter to Department of Land and Natural to Don Chang and the L.R. And we never received a response, so that's why we're concerned.
Will you email that to me, and I will get your response?
All right. I will send that letter to you.
That's really important. That's a big thing.
Okay. Holly, you had a comment?
Question. When you're referring to what you said, what happened at Diamond Head, you mean the homeless encampments that were up along the side of Diamond Head? And you're saying that nine trucks were taken out, and you're using that as a comparator? That as a board, we're trying to preempt issues like that here in Hawaii Kai? Is that the point you're making?
Only sort of. I mean, there's so many people who drive by that don't know what's going on in there.
And...
It's huge.
Yeah, I'm aware.
Yeah.
And you said 100 police... Hundreds of policemen shy. It's amazing what money will do. What are you doing in addition to throwing money at the problem? Because there's also the lack of respect for police officers and the lack of their ability to actually do their job. Their hands are tied with what they can do. So tell me what's being done beside just money.
Well, it's way more than just money, of course. What's happening now is there are more and more schools, and there are more and more ways that you can become part of the police department. It is... We're in some tough times. I mean, it's tough. There's a lot of shooting. There's a lot of... You know, a lot of things that are happening right now that sometimes parents want to say to their kids, "You don't really want to be a policeman, do you?" Again, you know, you're not going to be respected. You know, you're not going to... You're going to get shot at. You're going to get hurt. It's a tough road to go. Well, I can tell you, one of the things being done is that the... They have increased the... Well, I should say decreased some of the reasons why you cannot be a policeman. They're trying to make it so we have one of the better police academies in the country. And what we do is we train them really well, and then they go somewhere else to be a policeman. And so how to keep them home and how to bring them back home, it's a huge, big issue. And you know, we all love the policemen. There are just not enough of them.
Okay, I'm going to have to move this along. I want to remind everybody that we have 30 minutes left for our meeting, and so we have to squeeze everything in. So Mike, I want to thank you very much for sharing all that you have. And I hope that we'll see more of you next month, but I understand that...
You will. There's a... Yeah, it's... I'm not deliberately to see what I'm going to be doing yet.
That's fine.
But I'm going to be helping to recruit my replacement, and I'll bring the person here
Okay.
for the first couple of meetings, because you know, I live here, too.
All right, thank you very much. Is there anyone from Senator Stanley Chang's office online? Go ahead.
Yes, hello. I'm Finn. I'm from Senator Stanley Chang's office. I put our usual links in the chat there so you can sign up for our district newsletter, our housing committee newsletter. And then there's the contact information for our office. Then we wanted to let you all know that, like was mentioned before, any bills still making their way through the legislature after last week's conference period will be voted on at final reading at the session tomorrow. And there are a lot of important bills, including some of the bills that were passed out of the Senator Chang's Housing Committee, which would do things like requiring counties to issue supplemental affordable housing credits for publicly financed housing, allow developers to fast-track housing projects if they reserve 100% of the units for Hawaii residents who will live in those units and don't own any other real property. And would require the Hawaii Housing Finance and Development Corporation to prioritize developments that will be perpetually affordable when awarding grants or loans from the state's rental housing revolving fund. And then lastly, we just wanted to pass on a message from the judiciary. They wanted to let you all know that jury duty scams have been reported, and it's possible that anyone will be targeted if you get a phone call regarding a warrant for failure to appear for jury duty. Just hang up without responding to any of the questions or pressing any of the numbers you might be asked to press. If you get an email that looks to be from the judiciary, but you didn't email them first, don't open anything. Don't click any links. Don't reply to it. The judiciary says they will never call or email anyone... The judiciary says they will never call or email anyone regarding outstanding warrants related to jury duty and that generally they won't call or email you unless you've called or emailed them first. They'll contact you through the mail, so. Yeah, open for questions.
All right, thank you, Finn. First thing on my mind is please let the senator know that we still oppose SB thirty two oh two. It has not improved in the various iterations and we still oppose it and hope that he will have a change of heart and will vote against it. Questions for Senator Chang? No questions. Thank you very much, Finn, for hanging in with us this late. Is there anybody from Senator Chris Lee's office? All right, moving on, Representative Jean Ward, welcome.
In, in person. Madam Chair and members, especially the new, new members, welcome and welcome back in the saddle. Feels good. Thank you for your service to the community, S P I O. We'll, we'll miss your radio voice. A couple of things, let's start with the juicy rumors first. Costco's going to close at the end of the year and their rent's going from three hundred and fifty thousand to five hundred thousand. Called the GM and he said, no way. But look, guys, this happens every year. Thank you for the heads up, what people are doing. The nextdoor.com was lighting up about it. Then the second rumor, there was a difference in addition to what you said, Mike, is that the police station or the substation is going to close as well as, and this is where people are really upset, Satellite City Hall. So I got on the phone with Mike Formby in this Apple. How do you say her name? Hasselbaum. I was hoping she would be here to hear this because they were not aware that there was such a thing. Says, we don't close down Satellite City Halls. Because I know this community would raise, in fact, that may be a letter you guys want to write because that would be a real blow. Now regarding the police substation, Herb, they said it's not a substation. It was supposed to be in the beginning where the parking right is, was going to be a substation, but there wasn't the money. So they kind of rented this little retail thing and they got a letter probably two, three weeks ago that said, you know, we have a real high demand for restaurant and people like to dine out. We'd like to open up or consider reconsider negotiating your lease, which expires in twenty thirty one. If we could enter into negotiation, no, you take away the lease. So that's been bumped up the food chain at the city and county. If anything, there's probably the police station may move a bit towards town because they never really have the, you know, there's almost five hundred people short. So they couldn't man it and it's only used part-time. But in terms of the Satellite City Hall, our neighborhood board members, please join me in not letting that happen. Because that would be tragic with the aging of our community, et cetera. And it's such a convenience. I don't think it will happen, but it's where we are on alert and that's probably the only rumor that may have some substance to it. But I'm awaiting the answer from Mr. Formby. Having said that, tomorrow is the last day to argue and debate, the last time to really fight against this thirty two oh two. A bad bill, they want to make it in Hong Kong. I'm still on page one, where we have the legislation, the good, the bad, the ugly. But that's the bill that basically the neighbor islands love it because they got big lots and there's all kinds of expansion. It used to be in the original bill, they could put five, six, seven, eight different units on one lot. And if we know Hawaii Kai as it is, if that bill passed in its original form, even now in its present form, it's not going to be Hawaii Kai as we know it. So I'm going to be giving another fore speech tomorrow and it's going to be where, because the neighbor islands love it so much and in parentheses, they think this is the solution to the housing crisis. I mean, it may be a Band-Aid, but it's not the solution to the housing crisis, just by expanding what's blanking. So that is one of the bills that I'm very concerned about, you are very concerned about. And to, for you to know that jaywalking is also a bill that's going to be legalized. And again, the neighbor islands love it and it's something that some people want to hear. What do you mean legalizing jaywalking? I mean, silly and ridiculous. Some of you may see the video that I, I mentioned that. Probably one of the best things that's happened, at least according to my estimation, is the failure of the legalization of marijuana. But don't rest on your laurels, it'll come back, just like gambling, every year it comes back. And it's going to continually, at least from the Senate's point of view, the House has generally been, been more of a, or reliable. I, I would just say reliably against the issue. I know it's been almost two hours and a half, so I'm going to go to page two very quickly because we did do the safe streets issue. Again, the priorities, Kamilo Ei School, Kialaho and Hawaii Drive. And then for those who are very concerned about the Kalama Valley never having a crosswalk from its inception to now, especially at the Kalama Valley Community Park, which is a big concern. But we will hear more from Mr. Roger Morton. And as I said earlier, Madam Chair, we will get two or three options and then put it to the community and see what they want. And you know, what was interesting in our initial discussions? He said, you know, we've considered such things for the Kialaho and Hawaii Drive? Things like parking lanes on either side, so when people see that there's parking, they may slow down. And then get this one, this was really innovatively different, a roundabout at Kialaho and Hawaii Drive. I'm not sure that the space on that one, you're shaking your head, yeah, that was kind of like a British roundabout, which, yeah, okay, but that is going to be from the architects and the designs. So when we get it, we will present it. The point is, it's all about safety and doing the right thing. It's all, it's about safety. Okay, moving from the page on the safe streets to the trifecta we had for, why are we having so many blackouts? Well, we started with the discussion with Jim Kelly from PICO, followed by Mr. Churchill, some of you went to that. And then thirdly, we have the head of the P U C, who by the way is a resident of Hawaii Kai. So he knows the blackout by having lived through it. Do we have any solutions? We only know that we're kind of in the back of the bus in Hawaii Kai. All of this stuff goes over the coal aisle, goes through all the woods in Waimea Valley and then we get our power. And even if you've got underground utilities, if your power's got lines knocked down from the trees that are falling in Waimea Valley, there's, there's not much we can do. So that is a concern and it's probably going to continue. They never said that we're going to fix it, but they want to do a retrofit, I would say, a replacement of the underground utilities. That has not been given a promised date, but that is one of the considerations that is being done. At the bottom of page three, I announced on Kohio Day, celebrating Prince Kohio Day, that I let out my new, what do you call it, Broken Promises Two, which is a documentary about how we've promised the Hawaiians to return them to the land and have never done that for a hundred years and we've got twenty-nine thousand, twenty-eight thousand on the waitlist. It's a documentary that by the law in nineteen ninety-five, any surplus land, if it is going to be given, has to be given to the department by an old address. And they've never done that. That's a documentation. Going finally to the end, I had my insurance policy, no, he's gone, no. My, my insurance policy for hurricane recently canceled. What's going on with the condos, what's going on with insurance? Not only because of what's going from the Maui fires, but it's a national phenomenon. We are hurting big time. Lastly, please come out to meet President Obama's sister. She is going to be our guest speaker, second time around at the Beer Summit, which is in our lovely Oahu Club side park. If the wind doesn't blow, it's a cozy place and beautiful. That is my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Representative Ward, and thank you for staying so late.
And I'm going to go home and write my speech for thirty thirty two oh two.
All right, great. Good luck tomorrow. Is there anybody from Representative Mark Hashem's office? Any congressional representatives still online? Okay, going on to board business. Much of this was discussed earlier in the meeting, but I see that Galen Wong has joined us. So Galen, Brian Kimura addressed many of our concerns. And so he had indicated that there will be a study about the left turns for vehicles exiting Cocoa Marina Shopping Center and that we'll expect to hear back sometime in the future in terms of what your office discovers. And he did indicate some of the reasons for the installing the speed hump on Kalana Anoole. But he also indicated that your office will be doing additional study of the illegal left turns into and out of Portlock Road. So did you want to add anything? I don't know if you were here earlier to hear his presentation. You missed it.
I can always ask him.
Okay, all right. And then will you be making, make it, making it a regular occurrence to join us?
Maybe quarter one, but if you want me, just email me.
All right.
I can come by or do it virtually.
Okay, thank you, that would be very helpful. If there's an issue that comes up, it's good to know that I can just email you and that you'll be able to respond. But if you're going to, attending our meeting, let me know ahead of time so I'll put you on the agenda under the service providers up front, okay? All right, thank you very much, alrighty. And is this something that we need to take a look at or this is, oh, I'm sorry, it's not, it came at the same time that he's, went up there, so, all right. Thank you very much, Galen. Okay, so board members, we, board business item seven point one, consider banning the left turns. I'm going to take this off the agenda, but I expect to be receiving a report sometime in the future when the highways division can get back to us.
Roberta.
Yes?
This document that I pass out is a proposal to address the left turn issue.
Well, can you share this with Wong and it might be something that he might want to take a look at?
It might be something we want to discuss. To me, this is a cheap and easy, quick fix to the problem. We don't have to waste-
But Jean, we can't take any action on this issue. And so I think that the State Department of Transportation can maybe recommend that this might be something. So I, I want you to share that with him, so-
I, I'd be happy to do so, but I think we could also discuss the matter.
Is this something that we want to put back on the agenda? I, I tell you what, I'll put it under board business just for the purpose of Jean explaining his proposal to us, okay? And then if board wants to take action at that point, we can certainly do so.
That sounds fun.
Okay, great. Update on the Cocoa Head Shooting Range, we did get some information from Director Thielen. Same on update on the Cocoa Crater Stables. Update on the Ka'eevi Coast Scenic Byway, I think we've discussed that quite a lot this evening, discussing Baba Malu and Sandy Beach and, and all of that, so I'm not going to belabor that. Seven point six, update on Kamilo Nui Valley agriculture. Judy Ni'i is here and Judy, do you have anything? Thank you, Judy, for staying with us this late. What's happening on the Kamilo Nui Valley agriculture? We don't have a lot of time, so it has to be quick.
On behalf of the farmers in Kamilo Nui Valley, I'd like to thank Jean Ward for his efforts to support agriculture in Hawaii Kai. He had a resolution that he proposed to the legislature. Unfortunately, they didn't pass it. He has raised, he has raised the awareness of the predicament we face in our valley. Over fifteen years ago, at a meeting of the Thousand Friends, former Governor George Arioshie asked us to envision what we'd like to see Oahu become in the future. He stated that our vision may conflict what developers and politicians see. How prescient he was. We see our island slowly giving way to commercial and high-rise construction to an extent that I could never have imagined. Kamilo Nui has been a, is a special and beautiful oasis in Hawaii Kai. There are core, there is a core of farmers here that would like to continue the legacy that our families and predecessors established. As in the past, we need to fight for our survival of our valley as a agriculture, not only as an agricultural center, but also as a watershed. In his art, article in midweek, Senator Stanley Chang stressed the importance of the farms to monitor their use of water, their water use plans. Many of us have already implemented drip irrigation, hydroponics, and decreasing our reliance on overhead or irrigation. We also are trying to grow more drought tolerant plants. We would like Kamehameha Schools to consider a smooth transition whereby existing farmers can feasibly improve our operations to accommodate to the demands of our area. We would like Representative Ward's resolution to become a starting point for consideration and further discussions. And we would like to thank the community for your past support and hope we have your continued support in the future. Several of our members have tried to approach Kamehameha Schools. They are non-committal and one of our farmers talked to our land asset management and said, you know, what is, what can you offer us farmers? And he told us, well, when your lease ends, we'll talk about it, which is totally unacceptable. But that's where we are now, so I, I just want to bring up our plight to you so that, you know, you know what we're fighting against and they're, to me, they don't let us, I mean, they've brought in many other so-called farmers into our valley. They don't introduce us to them or what their plans are. So my idea is they're dividing us so they can conquer us. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Judy. Could you ask Representative Ward to share his resolution with us?
Yes.
If he sends it to me by email, I'll share it with the board members.
Okay.
And Judy, I want to remind you that Mayor Blanchiardi is going to be out here on May twenty-third-
Yeah, I saw that.
At Cocoa Head District Park. So I think maybe you and the farmers should attend, attend that meeting-
Yeah.
And share your circumstances. Thank you, thank you for sharing. Question, Herb?
Not a question, but a comment that we're still waiting for Kamehameha Schools to come out and tell us what they want to do with their property out here in Hawaii Kai, which includes the farms and James and Kalama Valley Shopping Center, all of that. They said they're going to come with some stuff. It was supposed to be, I believe, in March, but it was supposed to be moved to June, so hopefully-
Moved to sometime in the summer. No specific date.
Right, so just letting you know that the-
What they told us, they said, well, maybe in the fall. But you know, we plan our production way earlier than that. And I'll miss, I'll miss my crops if they decide to extend our lease. And I can't, I can't plan on unproven promises.
Thank you, Judy, we understand. Okay. All right, the next item under board business is a three absence notice and the board may consider declaring a vacancy for a sub-district. Board members, I explained to you earlier that if you miss more than three, or if you miss three meetings during a term, you will get a letter from the city and county of Honolulu asking whether you intend to stay on and, or whether you intend to resign. The board may also take a position to declare the seat vacant and have someone represent that sub-district. Now, this is pertaining to sub-district seven. Kim, you're on, online and you do have an opportunity to speak to your circumstances. Would you like to share anything with the board?
No, I think that at this time I would like to resign, just due to my health.
Um, no, I think that at this time, I would like to resign, just due to my health and what I've been going through with emergency surgery and such, and so I would like to resign and let that seat be open to whomever could fill that and get things done for the constituents in the Kalama Valley area.
Well, Kim, we're, we're going to be sorry to lose you, and I want to thank you very much for the years that you've spent on the board, working with us and the community. And Jeffrey will take down this verbal declaration as your resignation from the board, and so next month, we will advertise the position as, as open for appointment. Thank you very much for being with us tonight and for the number of years you've served with us. Herb?
Yeah, thank you, Kim, but with that being said, doesn't mean you can't now come to the board meetings and tell us what's going on with Cocoa Crater Stables. You know, like Hanama Bay did, and, um, Wawa Malu, it would be good to hear from you as to what's going on between you two, because I don't know what is, what is going on, but it'd be good to have you to let us know how things are going at Cocoa Crater Stables. Thank you, Kim.
Okay, board members, I don't believe we have any board committee reports or announcements, so we're gonna be moving to the approval of the regular meeting minutes. The minutes for March 25 were distributed. Are there any requests for revisions to the minutes? Seeing none, the minutes are accepted as distributed. Are there any other board announcements? I will then be going into the closing announcements, the next regular meeting of the Hawaii Kai Neighborhood Board is Tuesday, May 28 at 7:00 PM at Ha Ha Ione Elementary School Cafeteria and on WebEx. Hawaii Kai Neighborhood Board regular meetings are cable cast on O'Lelo, Channel 49, on the second Monday of the following month at 9:00 PM, and repeating on that month's third Friday at 7:00 AM. Videos can also be seen online at the O'Lelo webpage or at the Neighborhood Commission Office webpage. I want to thank everyone for staying with us this evening, to all of those online, thank you. Stacy, I know it's very late for you, you're away on the mainland, thank you for joining us. Meeting is adjourned, everybody, have a great month.